Okay, it's coming. Okay, all set.
Alrighty. Hey Brian, I just seen you pop in.
Okay, all set.
Alright, thank you Katie. Alright, we're gonna get started tonight with our committee meetings. We have six first readings, no second, third, or pending. We're gonna go into the Streets and Drainage Committee, Judy. Judy, turn your, you got your mute on.
Sorry honey.
That's okay.
Is that better? I apologize, I just was not paying attention.
That's okay.
Oh, you know what, I went back to find out what the... Give me just one second, I went down to find out what the password was, I forgot it. Okay, Resolution Number 20R72. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to participate in the Summit County Engineers Regional Pavement Maintenance Program for 2021 and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And Paul, I think that the reason we do this is because it saves so much money going with Summit County Engineer as opposed to just going on our own, am I correct?
That is correct, and, well, we think it does. We got Brian on the line too, he can, he can... You know, we, we had some, there was some feeling late last year, late this year, that, you know, maybe we'd be able to get the same price. But generally, historically, it's a volume price that the county gets. What's a little different about this resolution this year is that in the past, we've passed it to participate just in the chip and seal aspect of it. And this year, we're recommending that we author, that council authorize us to participate in the, in the pavement maintenance program. And then, in the early spring, when we have to identify what roads, we'll also identify what process. And, and we're hoping this year, planning this year, to start folding in some paving in addition to the chip and seal. And that's gonna take some, some, some work in early spring in terms of prioritizing, taking a look at those, the reports we got from the pavement condition ratings. And really, it's starting to put together a, sort of a master plan of where do we want to pave, where do we need to chip and seal, and, you know, the... Ideally, it's, you know, the dream would be eventually we, you know, evolve into where all the roads are paved. And who knows, but, but this will be a start. So this, this resolution just authorizes us to participate in any and all of their paving programs, including the striping, by the way. Brian, I made you show up, but is that, is that a pretty fair summary?
Summed it up, perfect.
So I'm assuming we should pass this tonight?
Yeah, cuz we're not committing anything except the fact that we're, that we want to participate and have a chance to submit roads and be part of the bid process in the early spring.
And Paul, is this a different name, Regional Pavement Maintenance Program?
Well, that's the overall name for the program, and then the subsections of the program, there's chip and seal, there's paving, et cetera. So we've always just done the chip and seal, but this time we're leaving the door open.
Doing the whole pavement.
Yep.
Sounds good. Okay, then if no one has any problems, we'll recommend that we will pass this tonight. Does anyone have a problem with it? I'm not hearing anything, so I'm assuming that we're okay. We'll close the meeting at 6:12.
Alright, and all your members were present tonight, Judy?
All my members are present.
Yep, we got a full house tonight, alright, thank you Judy.
Uh-huh, thank you.
We'll move into laws and ordinances, Andrea?
Thank you, Mr. Stock. We have one item for our committee, we, our committee will come to order here at 6:13, all members are present. That one item on our agenda is 20R73, a resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a one-year agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is a contract that we enter into every year. We've never had to utilize the services, but it is necessary that we have this contract so that we don't have to incur any costs otherwise, is that correct, Paul?
Yes, that's correct, if in fact, somebody that we prosecute has to have court-appointed, or the legal defenders, we'd have to compensate, but you're right, I don't believe there's been any claims in the past. Susan, yeah, Susan says no as well. So, but they provide that service and we, you know, we, we sign on for it.
And like I said, this is just a contract that we renew from one year to the next. I don't see any reason that we can't pass it tonight unless the members of the committee, do you have any comments or questions? Any other members of council? I'll go ahead and ask that we pass this tonight and waive the three readings, our committee concludes at 6:14.
Thank you Andrea, excuse me, move into Community Development, Andy?
We'll open Community Development at 6:14. All members present, Resolution 20R74. A resolution to reappoint GPD Group as City Engineer for New Franklin for 2021 and 2022 and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for city engineering services and declaring this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. We've used GPD for several years. I've used them in my day-to-day job, they're, they're great to work with, they're good people. The only difference I see, I know we renew this every year, this looks like a two-year.
Yes.
And other than that, I mean, I don't have any objection to that, anyone else have an objection to a two-year contract with them?
Nope.
I don't, so I will assume we could pass this tonight and we will close at 6:14.
Hey, thank you Andy. Alright Jim, we didn't leave you out, had to flip the page, but we're gonna turn it over to the Finance Committee.
Thank you Mr. Stock, we'll open a Finance Committee at 6:15, we have three pieces today, all members are present. We'll start with Resolution 20R75, a resolution authorizing expenditure of coronavirus aid relief and economic security funds for reimbursement of expenses incurred for public safety measures undertaken in response to the COVID-19 and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This goes along with Resolution 20R59, that we've talked about in the past, the hundred thousand dollars. And we also have provided, as an example, a list of all those expenditures totaling almost a hundred thousand dollars. And it's basically everything that we've talked about in the past. The only exceptions might be some cleaning issues that we're taking care of. But I believe we discussed everything that's on this list at some point over the last several months. So again, this is just, as I understand it, just basically approving the expenditures or looking for the reimbursements. Anybody have anything further to add? Okay, so if there aren't any questions, I would suggest that we waive the three readings on this. Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 20R76, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a one-year extension of the agreement with Julian and Grub to prepare New Franklin Financial Audits for 2015 through 2019 and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. So the original contract was for 2015 to 2019, and this is just a one-year extension. The Ohio State Auditor has suggested that we go ahead and do this with an additional fifteen hundred dollars, you know, obviously the price has gone up a little bit. But again, this is, they've been doing it, they've been doing a great job with it. And this is a one-year extension, again authorized and suggested by the State Auditor. Questions? Additional comments?
Just so you know that, actually the price for Julian Group is the same, the extra fifteen hundred dollar is for the single audit, which they'll have to do at the same time, because by law, if you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year, then, then you are required to have a single audit as well, which they will do at the same time as our regular audit, but that's the additional fifteen hundred dollar charge.
So hearing no objections, I would suggest that we waive the three readings on this one also. Super sweet. We'll move on to our final resolution of the evening, Resolution 20R77, a resolution adopting the temporary appropriations for 2021 for the City of New Franklin, declaring that this resolution should be effective immediately. Any questions?
Nope.
Last, we waived the three on this?
Yes.
We will close at 6:18.
Alright Jim, thank you. Cuz that was, that's it for legislation this evening, anybody have anything under community, committee they'd like to talk about this evening? Alrighty then, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order. The City of New Franklin Council Meeting, Wednesday, December 16th, 2020, we're gonna call it 6:18. If you'd like to, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Kelly, can we get a roll call please?
Mr. Cots?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here. Thank you. Like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of December 2nd, 2020.
I'll second that David.
Alright, we got a second, any comments, questions on the minutes? Roll call please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to zero, thank you. Like to make a motion to approve the financials for November 2020, subject to audit.
Second.
You have a second, any questions, comments on the audit? The financials? Alright, roll call please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, that passes seven to zero. We got one. It's a comment here, I would like to read. It says, "Our creek is a complete mess at the bottom of Turkeyfoot Lake. I have called and called. Who can I talk to? It is a real mess off of Coleman and Catalina, please help us, it will flood." Is anybody, Paul, have you heard about that one, or Brian? They said they had called the Portage Lakes Manager, Mike.
We know Mike, I have, nobody's approached me on that.
Okay.
Brian?
They're calling, they're calling about the ditch that runs parallel with Catalina that we do not maintain.
Who maintains it, Brian?
County did years ago, and...
Does anybody maintain it now?
No.
So we don't know of anybody we can call to help with it?
It's, part of it's the ditch and part of it's the lake being silted in.
So when they talk about Coleman and Catalina, they're talking about where everybody fishes down there at the...
Yeah.
Alright, so I mean, that one, first of all, I'm not aware of any flooding down there.
It hasn't flooded, they... No, it has not flooded.
Is it bad Brian?
It's silding up in the lake, yes, which they used to come every two to three years and dip it out. I haven't seen them there in a few years.
In that Summit County?
That was ODNR.
Okay, would that be who we would contact? And just see if they have that on their program?
Yeah.
It might be that it's just something that kind of, you know, sometimes it just slips through the cracks.
Right. I can reach out to Josh.
Alright.
That's all I have. Katie, you have nothing, I, that's all I see on air.
Yeah, that's the latest.
Little talk back and forth about that, so anyhow, alright, well, thank you, and hopefully we've answered your question on that. We're gonna go ahead and move into our legislation this evening, again, we have six first readings, no second, third, or pending. And move into Resolution 20-R-72, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to participate in the Summit County Engineers Regional Pavement Maintenance Program for 2021 and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This is a total paving program that we're applying for this year, and the... We would like to make a motion to pass Resolution 20R72.
We're gonna go ahead and waive that first Judy. Motion to waive 20-R-72?
Thank you honey.
Second.
We're waiving the resolution or waiving the three readings?
Waiving the three readings.
Three readings, yeah.
That's okay David, it took two of us to get it wrong, right?
Yep.
Sorry.
We have a...
You got it Andrea.
We have a motion in a second to waive the three readings on 20-R-72. Roll call please.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Now we'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution 20R72, David, would you help me on that?
No, you got it Judy. Take it a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or comments? Alright, roll call please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, that passes seven to zero. Move to Resolution Number 20-R-73, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a one-year agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
I'm gonna go ahead and move that we waive their three reading.
I'll second. Roll call please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
And now I'd like to make a motion that we pass this Resolution Number 20R73.
Second.
Yeah, first, second, any other comments, discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
We getting it off, that's it? Alright, that passes seven to zero. Move to Resolution 20-R-74?
A resolution to reappoint GPD Group as City Engineer for New Franklin for 2021 and 2022 and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for city engineering services and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This was assigned to Community Development, and I moved that we waived the three.
Second.
Yeah, first and second, roll call please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to zero, thank you.
No, no, not yet, we move to adopt 20R74.
Second.
Okay, first, we have a second, first and second, roll call please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Alright, now that passes seven to zero. Getting ahead of myself, thank you, we'll move... We'll move on to Resolution Number 20-R-75, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing expenditure of coronavirus aid relief and economic security funds for reimbursement of expenses incurred for public safety measures undertaken in response to COVID-19 and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on 20R75.
Second.
First and second, roll call please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 20R75.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Alright, that passed seven to zero. Move on to Resolution Number 20-R-76?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a one-year extension of the agreement with Julian and Grub to prepare New Franklin Financial Audits for 2015 through 2019 and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on 20R76.
First and second, roll call please.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 20R76.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes. Thank you, that passes seven to zero. Move to Resolution 20-R-77, Kelly?
A resolution adopting the temporary appropriations for 2021 for the City of New Franklin and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on 20R77.
Second.
First and second, roll call please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes. We move to adopt Resolution 20R77.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes, alright, that passes seven to zero, thank you. Again, we have no second, third, or pending legislation. We're gonna go to our favorite part of the meeting, which is the mayor's report.
Boy, here we go. Yes, let's see, plenty of good things going on. And thank you for, there was some, there was a lot of housekeeping stuff, a lot of year-end stuff, and appreciate the way it was handled and to keep us moving. We are working on details of the Aqua contract. You've probably seen some pipes starting to be placed around the city in staging. And, you know, I drove by that a day or so ago, and I thought, man, this is really gonna happen. This pipe is going in the ground, the water's coming to New Franklin, and it's a... So we are in the process, and a part of the discussions we had with Aqua throughout, this was even prior to the EPA application. Our contract with them was in 2009, it was a twenty-year contract that never went anywhere. So in fairness to them and their willingness to participate in this project, they said, listen, we're gonna get started over again, why don't we start a twenty-year contract at this point in time? And so we are working on that right now. And I will tell you that I think I'm gonna be able to, well, I, we, it... I think it's going to be maybe even more beneficial to New Franklin than the existing contract. So I'll keep you posted on that. There's gonna be specific provisions in there relative to this first phase that's already underway. And we're also gonna try to include some specific provisions relative to future phase, in particular what we're calling Phase Two, which would be to get water up Center Road to, to 93, and then also to go south on Renninger to Nimasola, and then up Nimasola. West on Nimasola to 93, and then north on 93 to hook into the Grace Church area again, really make a good loop and make water available to those who want it in that BP remediation area, so... We've, we're, we're having some pretty, very, very, I was gonna say intense, but it's a collegial discussion. And I will have a contract to present to you in January, I don't know if it'll be the first meeting, if not, it'll be the second meeting. I'll get it out to you ahead of, in advance, you'll have a look at it. But meanwhile, the, the work is being staged, and now it's probably gonna be right after the first of the year they break ground. Because now there's, they're still figuring out a few things about, I don't know, side of the road it's on. You know, the sewers, where's the sewer gonna be, the kind of things that those guys do. But we have, it's a good crew, and they got plenty of experience naturally, so... COVID, I will just say, you don't need me to tell you it's hitting home, but, but we've had some really, really graphic examples very close to, to home with staff. And we get to see unfortunately how, what, what seems like, you know, somebody's got asymptomatic, but they got it, the next person's got it, and they got some symptoms, and then the next, and then the next person in the bubble gets it, and it's, it's horrible. So I just tell you that, you guys know it, but, and you're probably seeing it in your own lives, in your own circle of friends. So we're asking, please, everybody be careful. I will tell you that City Hall, we wrestled with, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the public entities are closing their city halls, et cetera, and I understand that. We haven't done that yet because, partly because of some of the steps we took earlier this year and that we're on that list of COVID expenses that you approved. But when, when there's access over here in admin or zoning, those folks are talking through bulletproof plexiglass. And if they have a document, it goes, you know, nobody, it goes under the slide, and we can handle it with gloves or any way we want to. So we haven't really found it necessary to close the doors because we don't get a lot of traffic, but, you know, that'd be the last ditch, so I want you to know, it's not that we're insensitive to it, we just... I, I want you to know, it's not that we're insensitive to it, we just feel like we're pretty well protected, and I've talked to our staff about that, that, to make sure they're comfortable with it, and they are. So, uh, if anything changes there, I'll let you know, but, uh, for now, our doors are still open with those safe, there's no, everybody has to wear a mask, and there's no, and nobody's getting anywhere near each other. Um, economic development planning is continuing, uh, up there on State Route ninety-three. Uh, we are, um, we're, we're already having some discussions with developers. We're, we're gonna, we, we're, we're gonna get some drone images, and some topographical mapping, and some site mapping of ninety-three, that whole corridor, there's a, there's an awful lot of, uh, land available for development, we added up, it's close to a hundred acres. Uh, and, uh, um, but a lot of it are the long, narrow lots, so we're gonna be, we're gonna take a look at it from above, uh, and see what the topography says, and, and try to be able to suggest to some developers, okay, here's forty acres that you could do something residential. Uh, and, and that's gonna take a cooperative effort of maybe two or three homeowners, or, yeah, landowners, but we're gonna have those conversations with them in advance, so. So, we're moving that along in concert with the water, and, uh, I want you to, you know, we're, we're, we're working. Um, the, uh, request for proposals went out for the Tudor House. Uh, we've already, you know, we've had, uh, you know, already some interest from a couple people that beyond the, the original gentleman who, who, uh, approached us. So, uh, I think that, uh, you know, we'll get some good feedback on that, and we'll see what, uh, um, uh, we left, I think, July, or at the end of January, we, we gave until then to respond. Um, January, January, uh, twenty-ninth, I think, I think we went to the end of the month. So, once we get those proposals in, um, we'll, we, assuming we get some, we, we'll take a look at them, we'll, we'll talk with the folks that are submission, that submit. Um, we'll see what, what makes sense. Um, and, uh, and we'll keep everybody apprised of, of what our, uh, options are there. At some point in time, then, if, you know, if in fact we get a proposal, and it's a viable proposal, and it seems to make sense, we would then, uh, reduce that to a contract form, uh, and then we'll have plenty of discussions on the contract. Uh, and, uh, naturally, ultimately, council would, would have to approve that. So, we'll engage the public again, like we did before, uh, and let everybody know what, you know, what the plan is, and what it looks like. Um, I, I don't wanna get too, too deep into the weeds on that, but I'll tell you, I, I, I continue to be extremely interested in that option, when, you know, whenever I'm on the grounds over there, yes, it's beautiful grounds, and boy, it's, uh, there's a lot to do, a lot could be done, and, and, um, and the things that we could do, if we can get a four-season event center up there, uh, that we could use it for the community, and, uh, not, not just the, you know, the twelve or eighteen events that we'd already carve out, um, but, uh, but in addition to that. Um, the, uh, now, you'll laugh at me for this one, but, uh, uh, you'll, you'll be shocked to know that I'm not, not a great, uh, ballroom dancer. Um, I'm sure that surprises you. Uh, but a while back, I, yeah, it does. Took it, but, but, I, I took a couple classes with a group, and, and it was a nice bunch of people, we did it over at Turkey Fidd Island Club, and man, if we had a facility to do those kind of things, you know, to, you know, to, to get the, get people in there for a Tuesday night, when, when, you know, when that center's open and it's not being used, so. Anyway, um, we're working on that one, too, I'll keep you posted. Um, Katie really did a fabulous job, and you guys did a fabulous job of supporting these, uh, uh, Christmas for eight families, uh, two from each school district, there was, uh, just about twenty-five hundred dollars collected. Uh, and then, um, she went out and did most of the shopping, God bless her, and then they had a wrapping party in here, uh, the administrative staff, and, uh, and they, everything just looks beautiful, and most of those now have been distributed, or they're in the process of being distributed, so. As we said before, you know, it wasn't, you know, it, when that was all, that was you folks, and that was city employees, that was the unions, uh, the city unions, and it was a, a, a team effort, and just a gesture, I think, from, uh, from, from the people who work here, uh, of love towards the, the people that, that are served by those folks. Um, that's all I got, other than to mention that, that, you know, we have on the calendar, uh, a brief meeting on December thirtieth at six P M for whatever housekeeping matter Susan has. Uh, and then, uh, I did notice that our, our first council meeting would be January sixth, and that does satisfy the charter. Now, you might remember, sometimes we've had to sneak in with another meeting, but, uh, we've got seven days from the beginning of the year. And so, since it's January sixth, we don't have to schedule a separate, a, a different meeting for that, so. That would be the first meeting in January, and the organizational meeting, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, Paul. Move into finance, Susan?
Hi, yes, he stole my thunder, I was gonna remind everybody about the year-end meeting, but that's okay. Uh, yeah, it'll be a short one, um, just any transfers that we have to have going into the end of the year, and any other, uh, tidying and up business. Um, the other thing is, besides our year-ends, um, year-end things, uh, which keep us more than busy, um, I finally got the, for the third time, have given the, the county their spreadsheets for their, uh, their COVID fund. Um, they've had us change them several different times in several different ways, but, um, I finally got them one exactly, hopefully, exactly the way they want. Um, we still have to continue with this for the other fund, so it's kind of a major project, it's about yay-high stack of papers that had to become a spreadsheet, so, that on top of everything else has kept us kind of busy. But, um, we're moving right along, and, uh, we should be able to get our, uh, end-of-the-year stuff tidied up on the thirtieth.
Right, thank you, Susan. Move into old business, any old business? How about new business?
About a couple things, real quick.
All right.
Sorry. Uh, first of all, um, Kevin Powell has put together a, a program for this Saturday at Saint Luke's, uh, where carolers are going to be kind of, uh, circling the building. Obviously, we, we can't go into building, and the, the residents of Saint Luke can't come out or, or gather anywhere, they're, they're pretty much restricted to their rooms. But the rooms have windows, and, uh, so, he's, he put together, he worked with Saint Luke's to, to come up with a plan to, uh, uh, have carolers kind of circle the building, and, and, uh, bring some cheer to the residents, uh, looking for anybody, um, singing talent does not matter. Uh, there'll be enough people there to drown out, you know, off keys or whatever, but it, it'd just be just such a nice thing to, for the community to do, for the residents of, of Saint Luke. Uh, there's more information on the, uh, New Franklin Voice page, uh, Facebook. Uh, the, it is this Saturday at twelve o'clock, um, at Saint Luke's, just show up, you, uh, uh, maybe, you know, send, send a little message to Kevin that you, you'll be able to be there. Uh, again, go to the Facebook page of New Franklin Voice, get the information. Uh, but please, show up, dress up, have a great time, that, I think it's gonna be really, really fantastic, so, uh, anything you guys can do to the public, to do, to, uh, share that, that'd be great. Uh, also wanna mention that Gather at the Lakes has scheduled a blood drive, uh, for the New Franklin area. This January fourteenth from one to sixth, that's a Thursday, uh, from one till six P M at Gather at the Lakes. Uh, appointment slots are open now, so you can schedule your appointment at redcrossblood dot O R G. That's redcrossblood dot O R G, and just type in the zip code, it'll ask you to zip code four, four, three, one, nine, and then scroll down to January fourteenth, and you'll see it there, and you'll be able to sign up and, uh, and donate blood, so. Obviously, there, there's always a need for blood, and, uh, the wintertime, it makes it even harder, and then, uh, the COVID closing, the high schools were, you know, and, and other school facilities that they were able to do a lot of drives, um, has, has impacted it, so, please, if you're, you're so inclined, please, uh, sign up and, and donate some blood. Uh, of course, you know, it's the Red Cross, so you know everything's gonna be safe, you know they're gonna follow proper protocol, uh, for everything, so, uh, go there, redcrossblood dot O R G. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jim, and, uh, thanks, Kevin. I do have one thing, something I've been, I just wanna throw out that I've been kind of looking into for a little while now, about contractor registration in the city. I mean, we've got to a point where any solicitors, we're, you know, having them coming and registering. So, you know, it's time that maybe we look into a contractor regi- registration. I do have some stuff from the city of Akron, they have it, the city of Caga Falls, city of Streetsboro, and I actually got the legislation and the information from its, uh, Evansville, Indiana, which is kind of the gold standard of contractor registration. The way I, I started thinking about it, about, you know, our businesses, they pay city tax, the people that work here pay city tax, and we have, we have contractors, I'm sure, that come in and out, do projects on homes or what have you, that, we, we don't know they're here, we don't know that they came here, worked, got paid, and left. So, that's one thing, that's an issue with, you know, in, income to the city for, you know, work performed in our city. Another one is, we have, you know, aging community. You know, you see on the news all the time, a contractor comes in, takes money from somebody for materials and that, and they never see him again. You know, and there's no way of tracking them. So, this would be something, and I, like I said, I got the applications from different cities. If, you know, if we're interested, I can start pursuing it more. It would be something that, if you're gonna do work in the city of New Franklin, whether it be somebody's roof, plumbing, electrical, you know, there's small fees to get, uh, your regi-, you know, get your registration. You know, you know, a hundred dollars here, and, you know, it varies, that's something we can talk about, then we know if somebody's in our community doing business. And if there's a problem, we know how to go back, you know, there's, the application fill-out's gonna give your, you know, your registration for the city, you know, the state, your L L, LLC, your corporation, so we're gonna know all of that. So, if somebody says, hey, this, this person come in to do this job for me, took my money, and I haven't seen him again, and I, I can't even get a hold of him. Well, if they have this registration, then we can help, we can help them out on that, at least give them the information they need to pursue it, so. I just wanna know how everybody feels, should I pursue this more? Start getting more information that I can distribute to everybody, or does anybody have any comments on that?
Yeah, are you strictly speaking for some sort of, um, service done at your home, and not?
It, it could be, yeah.
Utilities, um, out on the road, or utility companies?
I mean, that could be something that we can put into it, this is more for just any contractor doing work in the city of New Franklin, and it could be Spectrum or anybody, that they would have to come get, you know, register with the city that we know they're gonna be here.
How does that?
For anybody.
How does that work with the Summit County contractor registration?
Well, Akron has their own, Streetsboro has their own, Caga Falls have their own, so I don't know exactly how it works with how it registers in Summit County, but these cities have their own registration.
Do they have their own building department?
Uh, I'm not sure if everybody has their, I don't know if it has anything to do with the building department, it's more just registered in the contractor as far as they're gonna be in our community during work, the, the permits they would pull for their work would go through Summit County with us, and I'm sure, I'm not sure if Caga Falls, if Kai, Caga Falls has their own building department, but I don't think it bases on, if you have your own building department, it's basically just knowing who contractors are working in the city of New Franklin. Besides zoning permits, they have to come to us for that, but building permits, they go to Summit County. So, it's more of keeping track of just the contractors doing, doing work in our city, and it's a tax thing, it's, uh, just looking out for our community on who's coming in here and taking people's money.
Uh, would, would one company, uh, who would be registered, would that encompass any of, any subs that they would use, or would each sub?
Yeah, there is, yeah, there's, I mean, with, with.
There's a lot of avenues to take.
You want me to look into it, yeah, they'd have, there's stuff that have subcontractors listed. Like I said, I have legislation, I have the actual, you know, what you have to fill out, like, for the city of Akron to get it, the city of Caga Falls, like I said, Evansville, Indiana is like the gold standard, it's, it's looks at about everything you can look at, so that you could take a little bit from everything, but I just wanna know how everybody feels about it before I, you know, get in.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted to know how far you're gonna go, to whether or not I have to abstain or not.
The far as what, Andy, I'm sorry?
I just need to know how far you're gonna go, so I know to abstain from, uh, from.
Oh, no, I mean, it's, you know, yeah, we'll just have to, like I said, if, if you want me to go into it, maybe I'll get some stuff together and get with our law director. I have, like I said, I do have some legislation from other communities, I have their verbiage on, you know, I do have some of the actual forms that contractors have to fill out for these different places. I mean, I don't think we have to go to the gold standard.
Would Barry be in charge of kicking these people out who are not registered?
Well, there is, some of them have better enforcement, some don't, so, I mean, it would be just like this solicitation, who can, I mean, there's people I'm sure that come through here selling stuff that don't have our solicitor, you know, don't come and see us, I don't know who kicks them out, or who, that's just something we need to look into. Like I said, some have better enforcement, some have better verbiage on how it works, so, I mean, it's, I, I'm sure we could pick a middle road if everybody wants me to look into, go a little further with it, get some more information that I could give everybody to look at.
I'm okay with looking at some more information, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment?
Yeah, I think so, David, just check what the overlap is with Summit County, if any, I mean, I don't under, I don't know it, but if you have to register in Summit County, does that affect them working in the city of New Franklin? Or would that just affect when they work in, like, Coventry Township, or?
Yeah, like I said, Akron has it, Streetsboro has it, Caga Falls, they all have them in place at this time, so. I don't know what the overlap is, and I can check into that.
Okay.
I would guess it, that if you have a Summit County, Akron still would want you to have one, maybe, or you don't have to have Summit, you know, I don't know how that works.
Okay.
But, I could look into it further, if you, everybody would be okay with that.
Did you, yeah, would you run it by Barry?
Yeah, I'll get with it, like, once I get it going, like, I'll get with the law director, I'll get something a little bit better for the, like I said, right now, it's just a lot of.
Barry, Barry might feel like there would be an enforcement issue, and are they enforcing the things that they can even, they need to be enforcing now, you know, I don't want more on his plate, or do we, will we have to hire more people? I don't wanna pass something unless we know that we're gonna be able to actually enforce it.
Yeah, and another good thing is, like, the solicitor thing, we don't know how we enforce that, but there's a lot of people know we have it, so they come and get it. So, if you can get eighty percent of the contractors just know that we have it, and they're gonna come do it.
Correct.
That's a good thing. If you don't have nothing, then you don't have nothing, you know, so as far as, I'm not sure, like, even some of our zoning, we're not driving around looking for somebody having a junk car, but people know we have it, so, majority of people are not gonna have a junk car because they know that's the rule.
Right.
So, if you have something, that gives somebody that says, hey, they have, I gotta go register, and you're always gonna have people that ain't gonna do it, and if we catch some, catch them, if not, you're not, you know, so, it's something, at least something.
You're right.
Mayor, you have any thoughts, or?
I'm open to, you know, take a look at it, for sure.
Okay. Everybody else, too, Tony, everybody, Terry?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for that, any other new business? All right. Just checking, uh, we're gonna go into our public questions and answers. All right, I don't really see anything that we need to discuss on that. Paul, executive session?
No.
No? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Great, ayes have it. I guess everybody have a good Christmas, and we might see everybody before New Year's, it looks like, on December thirtieth. So, all right, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Be safe, everybody.
Bye-bye.